You have, it's basically different on every device for where it's situated on the screen. And we'll just get going in one moment. But in the interim, I would like to introduce Cindy Levine, who is the president of the League of Women Voters in Willmet.
Thank you, Julianne. Thank you to everybody. Welcome back and welcome to those of you who have just joined us and thank you for joining our candidate forum today. We will now be turning to the forum for District 39, Willmet Board of Education, and our moderator Kathy Tate Bradish from the League of Women Voters in Evanston will now begin.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, everyone. Welcome to the Willmet District 39 Board of Education Candidate Forum. It will run until 10:50 and be followed at 11 o'clock by the District 203 School Board. Welcome to any newcomers who didn't join us for the first forum of the morning as and welcome to this exercise in democracy. I have just a few reminders. The candidates have agreed to the rules. Lots were drawn for their speaking order in case that is a mystery to you. They will have a two-minute opener, 90 seconds to answer each question unless it seems to me that a question could be answered in less time that would allow us to get a few more asked, and they'll have a one-minute closing statement. They will only answer the question on the table. They won't address each other, except perhaps to be complimentary about a previous answer. If there is a personal attack, which I don't expect at all, I will stop the speaker and give a little extra time to whichever candidate was addressed. Candidate Schisler is not attending, and we are ready to begin. Candidate Schneider Fabs will give her opening first, and she and all of the candidates will have two minutes. Candidate Schneider Fabs.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your interest in District 39 in the upcoming election. To the League of Women Voters, Willmet, thank you for hosting this forum during each election cycle. An informed electorate is so important, and this is the only time we have as a community to hear from those running for office. And to my fellow candidates, thank you for your willingness to serve. My name is Lisa Schneider Fabs, and I'm running for my second term at District 39. I have three children, all who have been or are in the district. I've lived in Willmet for more than 10 years and have been active since the day we arrived. Professionally, I'm an independent consultant that provides strategic planning, program design, and project management services to executive clients in the nonprofit and public sectors. In 2017, I ran because I wanted to give back to my community. I cared deeply about education and thought my professional experience would be an asset to the board. I'm running again for all those reasons, but now have another, more significant reason: consistency. The stakes are high for our young people right now, and having consistency on our board is important, especially in the first few years of a superintendent's tenure and as we continue to navigate the pandemic. Veteran board members provide the stability and institutional knowledge needed for a high-functioning board. During my first term in office, I demonstrated my ongoing commitment to the district and our village. For the last two years as president, I've demonstrated my leadership abilities. We've accomplished a lot in that time. We've launched Keep 39. We've hired a new superintendent. We've overseen the COVID-19 response and ensured a focus on equity and inclusion. Over the next hour, I look forward to sharing more about what we've accomplished in these last four years, as well as my vision for a second term. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Kim.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Willmet for hosting this important forum and giving us candidates a voice during these socially-distanced times. My name is Bonnie Kim, number three on the ballot. I'm excited to be here today and to be given this opportunity to share my qualifications and views for the District 39 School Board. By way of introduction, I've lived in Willmet for 13 years with my husband and two boys, a high school sophomore who went through District 39, and a fourth grader at Mackenzie. My professional background is in public interest law. I was a criminal defense, public defender for several years, and also worked for the Illinois Human Rights Commission to enforce the state's anti-discrimination laws. Since having children, I have primarily been a stay-at-home mother, which has afforded me the opportunity to volunteer extensively at Mackenzie, which has ranged from practicing sight words with first graders to editing the yearbook, running the fine arts program, and participating in the variety show, which is a big annual fundraising event. I am a huge supporter of public education and its commitment to serving and teaching all children, and recognize that public education is a shared responsibility. Over the years, I have attended the District 39 School Board meetings as a parent when I was interested in an issue before the board, and in the last several months have attended all the school board meetings to educate myself on the issues, procedures, and makeup of the board. I am confident that I will add value to the board with my skills and perspective and strengthen the relationship between the district and the community it serves by working towards greater understanding and better communication. I support District 39's commitment to excellence in education, which extends beyond academics to include social, emotional learning, physical well-being, self-reliance, leadership, resilience, and good citizenship. Our children deserve nothing less.
Thank you. Candidate Hart.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for taking time to join us. It's wonderful to see the community interest, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for the time and commitment placed in organizing these candidate forums. I enjoyed listening to the candidates last weekend and earlier this morning, and I look forward to our conversation today. By way of background, I have three children in District 39 schools, boy-girl twins in second grade at Central and a son in sixth grade at High Crest. We moved to Willmet from New York City shortly after our twins were born. There were so many aspects of Willmet that were appealing to us and continue to appeal to us, but our first priority was absolutely to find a school district with an excellent academic platform and also differentiated resources. When we moved, I decided to take time off from my career. I had previously worked in brand management at Quaker Oats in downtown Chicago, which is now PepsiCo, then at Welch's, and lastly, at the National Basketball Association in New York City. I have a great deal of experience with research, analysis, financial management, and working across a very wide range of stakeholders. I've been actively involved in our community. This includes serving on the board of our preschool, teaching Sunday School, and years of service on Central's Executive PTA Board. I am currently the president of the Central PTA, and as president, I've enjoyed meeting families throughout our school community but across the district as well, and having an opportunity to be involved in district-level initiatives. This past summer, I served on the District 39 Task Force, which was put in place to help kids return safely to school. Being part of this initiative gave me a much greater insight into the role and the importance of our school board, as well as the talent and commitment of the District 39 community overall. I'm proud to be part of District 39. We have an excellent school district, but we cannot be complacent. We need to challenge ourselves and set high standards.
Thank you. And I'll remind everyone, if you need to move the little timer box for the audience as well. Did you know that when you're on Zoom calls, you can put your cursor and move the boxes around, just to be sure you can always see that time card? Candidate Caesar Ready.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank League of Women Voters for this opportunity. As an elected board member, it is I'm very grateful, frankly, for the role which play in our local elections. So my name's John Caesar Ready. I'm running for reelection to the board. I've been on the board since 2017 and am the current chair of the Finance Committee. I have two children currently in the district, and I'm running again primarily in order to help maintain continuity of leaderships on this important board. With Mark Steen ending his eighth year on the board, I think it's important that at least two members of this seven-member board should continue for a second term in order to effectively transition leadership to the next generation of board members. My day job is that I'm a tax partner of a public accounting firm where I lead our firm's Chicago Office State Local Tax Practice, which is about 45 professionals. I'm very proud of what our district has accomplished over the past year and before. I'm also proud of the board, which in my opinion is high-functioning and very supportive of our administrative team. I think the board's most significant accomplishments prior to COVID were, one, to maintain a conservative approach to financial management. We basically drove up our reserves, which we were really happy we had, and in recruiting and supporting our excellent superintendent, who I can't believe only started 20 months ago. I think it feels longer, thanks to COVID. Without both of these prior accomplishments, our district would have had a much tougher time navigating this crisis and I think navigating successfully through it. I think my main contributions to the board are with respect to helping address financial issues. I also try to take a constructive and informed approach to every issue that comes before the board. Again, thank you for this opportunity and looking forward to this debate.
Thank you. Forum, I will gently remind everyone that the league runs forums, debates, as we know from some of our published televised events. Candidate Kim, you're going to take this question first, and I remind all the candidates, please don't hesitate to ask me to repeat a question if you need a little tweak to your memory. So Candidate Kim first, how do you see your role as a school board member and whom do you represent?
Thank you for the question. So I think that the role of a school board member is multifolded. So first and foremost, I think that we need to ensure the highest quality of education for our children, and we need to recognize that we're a representative of the community. As the bridge between the District 39 administration and the community, effective, transparent, and respectful communication in both directions is critical, and that really is the job of the school board. And I think that it's really important for a school board member to base her decision-making on as much information as possible. It's important to research every issue by looking at the impact that any decision will have on our children and our community, to look at what other districts are doing, brainstorming, to identify the best and worst-case scenarios, and to listen to the experts and District 39 stakeholders. And finally, I think that a school board member needs to work well with the other school board members. So if you have a view on an issue, you should work hard to advocate for your position, but at the end of the day, respect the process and support the decision of the board.
Thank you. Candidate Hart.
Thank you. The board's role, as I see it, is to provide guidance and support for our administration in order to provide our students, our children, with the best possible foundation in this window of time for success at Nutria, in college, or wherever their path may lead them. The board adopts policies to manage our schools, and this can extend from the hiring of a superintendent to approving the budgets, to transportation. All of these policies are critical to run day-to-day, to run a successful district, and they're critical in the long-term success of our children. I don't take that lightly. My role is to listen, to learn, and to continually be an advocate for our children and for the district at large.
Thank you. Candidate Caesar Ready.
Thank you. You know, I really like what Angie said about listening and learning. I agree. I think that's primarily the role. And also to realize that you're part of a team of public trustees, basically, and you're in charge of a really important institution for the community that, you know, I always like numbers, so you know, that has almost 600 employees, 3,500 kids, and, you know, a $55 to $90 million budget, depending on was that my signal?
No.
Oh, okay. Depending on, you know, what you're counting. So I think that's my answer.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Schneider Fabs.
Thank you. I think the role of a board member is several-fold. The first is we need to hire and maintain a superintendent. We need to approve the budget and maintain the fiscal well-being of the district. And we approve policy, set and approve policy. On the board, we always have this dance floor balcony analogy, where the dance floor is daily operations and the balcony is oversight, and the board always belongs on the balcony. And so we're always, as a board, checking ourselves. Is the decision that we're looking at on the dance floor or the balcony? And then a really important role that we have is we are the liaison between the community and the district. We are supposed to be listening to hear the voice of the community and reflect that to the district. And finally, you asked kind of, who do we represent? We represent everyone in the district, both parents, students, stakeholders, the administration, and we have a duty to provide a high-quality education to all students.
Thank you. Candidate Hart, you'll take this question first. How did the board and administration do in the last year with COVID challenges? And what, if anything, will you do differently going forward?
Everyone's favorite topic, right? So I was selected for the District 39 Task Force during the summer of 2020, and the task force, as I mentioned, was charged with safely returning the children to school as well as providing a quality remote option for families. And I felt that District 39 very efficiently mobilized a team of constituents across our community. I think that one of the major successes was pulling in community members who had not previously engaged in district initiatives. And I saw and appreciated the firsthand benefit of this and think that we should look to collaborate like that on initiatives and on our strategic plan going forward. But that was not the only success. Safety for students and staff was at the forefront of every discussion. The flexible learning models provided families with options. District 39 preemptively secured substitute teachers to help minimize disruption. You're proactive in researching, screening, and testing for students and staff. And I witnessed ongoing collaboration with administrators, the board, teachers, which was excellent to see. That said, it's a balancing act. Nothing about COVID has been perfect, but I think that the district has done a really great job to this point, and I applaud them for looking to get the five-through-eight kids, fifth-through-eight kids back to school this spring as well.
Thank you. Candidate Caesar Ready, you'll be next, but let me just intervene to say somebody has something on their computer that's dinging occasionally, and a nice Zoom tip is so I always just close out my email because that's where hangout calls come in on from my family and my WhatsApp, because that dings when things come in. I work in Kenya. So if it's one of you who has something that dings when it comes in, just close that out for the interim. It's not a big deal, but but it doesn't mean that somebody's time is up. So candidate Caesar Ready, same question.
So I tell this story every once in a while because there were a bunch of newspaper articles, I think, in the Tribune about school board members of communities that failed to adapt to COVID quickly and how the school board members were looking for new homes, maybe outside of Illinois. And so, and I'm not that person. I'm very proud of how the school district has gotten through COVID, and I'm proud of the board, too. I remember, I'm gonna get my dates wrong, but back in April and May, that we, in no uncertain terms, and I think unanimously told the superintendent and the administrative team that we will spend what it takes to maximize in-person learning. And we just kept saying it. So I think that, you know, I think that says it all. I'm good with that answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Schneider Fabs.
COVID has hurt everyone, administrators, teachers, parents, students, and board members. We've all had to figure out a new way to live, work, play, and learn, and it's been hard, really hard. As board members, we were acutely aware of the collective and individual toll. I listened closely to your comments at board meetings and read all correspondence. If I could change anything, it would be to create situations for each child to address their particular issues, struggles, and pain. But that was not possible, and nothing we could do could address the loss and suffering from a year of dealing with COVID. But here's what we did do. We defined North Stars. We put safety first. Then we prioritized maximizing in-person instruction. We created committees and task forces. We hired experts. They met, they met, and they met again. They helped us shape our responses to providing instruction in the time of COVID. The majority of the decisions we made had no clear answer, but looking back, we made good choices. Because if you judge using the most important indicator, we batted it out of the park. No one died. No student, teacher, administrator, or family member of a student died from contracting COVID at school. That doesn't mean there isn't suffering or that our choices seemed unfair or wrong to some, but I know this. I'm proud of our decisions to date and will continue to make decisions in accordance with our North Stars.
Thank you. Candidate Kim.
Thank you. Like many of you viewers who have school-aged children, I attended school board meetings last summer and anxiously awaited emails to get clarity on whether schools would be open for my children, who, like yours, thrive best in school learning. And I know that the school board and administration fully agree that children's education and well-being require in-school learning. So when I consider how the school board handled COVID, it really comes down to whether I think that the administration was doing everything it could to make in-school learning happen, given that there was a life-threatening pandemic and no directives on a state or federal level as to what was safer to keep kids in school or at home. As a parent, I saw what the school was doing, setting up a task force that Candidate Hart served on, following IDPH's safety guidelines, transforming our classrooms and curriculum to accommodate safe-in-class learning, and offering different learning options for families based on their decisions on what was best for their families. The district also worked hard to enable schools to adapt based on new information on the spread of the virus and the shifting infection rate in our community. I am very proud that our schools are currently offering daily in-class instruction to our elementary children at an almost pre-pandemic level, a hybrid model to our middle school and junior high students at the maximum extent possible currently, and remote learning as an option for all children. And I commend the administration for working hard over the past few weeks to devise a plan to get our High Crest and Willmet junior high students on campus.
Thank you. Candidate Caesar Ready, you're going to take this question first. What is the single biggest challenge facing District 39 after this school year?
Oh, wow. Single business. Oh, wow. I have to really think about this. So we single biggest, I think, after the pandemic, getting people back to normal, you know, getting, and from my perspective, it's making sure that the kids are where they should be educationally. So if there was learning loss over the COVID pandemic, that we do what needs to be done to make sure we supplement their learning ability, you know, learning opportunities to get them there. So I think that's one. So single, second to one.
Thank you. Candidate Schneider Fabs.
Thank you. I'm gonna concur with Candidates Caesar Ready. That our schools have been safe, but we know that all of us have been hurt socially and emotionally by the pandemic, and that even our most resilient students have likely suffered somewhat academically. And so we need to continue to assess the impact of COVID on students, staff, and the administration and execute on a recovery plan for all stakeholder groups.
Thank you. Candidate Kim.
Thanks. I am really excited about this new, District 39's new long-term strategic plan, which is going to be the big challenge over the next year. This was the brainchild of Dr. Kremis Goli last year, which was a really great initiative for a new superintendent, and it was just delayed this past year. And it's a way for the staff, parents, and community to have a direct impact on our schools. The long-term strategic plan seeks to have the community help to identify our core values and our core goals, which the administration will then use as a roadmap, and each year assess where we are on the map and what we need to do to stay on course. We are currently at the early stages of the process and have the Community Review Committee and an outside company working to facilitate the process. Last year, Nutria implemented a 10-year strategic plan with over 5,000 people participating in the surveys that extended to six areas: academics, students' well-being, school climate, leadership, the greater community, and financial responsibilities. I hope that our district's strategic plan will be just as broad in scope and have as many participants involved. I look forward to monitoring our progress each year to ensure that we meet our long-term goals that will extend beyond any of our tenure. Although the strategic plan has been delayed, I think the timing right now is really fortuitous because now more than ever, we will benefit from the unifying effect of coming together as a community and realizing we have common goals for our children.
Thank you. Candidate Hart.
Thank you. I'm gonna take a little bit from everyone here, because I agree. I think that the strategic plan that we are about to embark upon will include the building blocks for the next three to five years. So I think that's critically important, but also part of that strategic plan needs to be how we are going to recover from COVID and any recovery plans that need to be put in place. I think that coming out of COVID, we need to be transparent. I think our community performs better overall when we all feel that we're in the know and we understand. So we need to engage as much as possible. We need to look at test scores, both achievement and growth, and clearly define where our greatest needs are, establish goals and plans that we can measure against and communicate clearly to our stakeholders. I also feel that in addition to the academic piece, there's a social, emotional aspect here that we're going to need to deal with. Our children have lived through and experienced something that we never thought possible. And coming out of COVID, we must be prepared to look at their social, emotional health and expedite any plans or initiatives to help them all feel connected and supported.
Thank you. Candidate Schneider Fabs, you're going to take this next question first. What is your top educational priority for District 39 students and your plan to achieve it?
Just give me one minute to think about how I want to answer this. Okay. So my top educational priority is an increased reliance on and use of data to drive student performance. The board and administration has increased their use of data on all levels, and this practice drives needed changes in response to performance and student trends. The district is committed to continuing to expand the use of data and transparency in regards to performance data. This is going to help us understand where to focus in the next year as we address the post-COVID world. And we're also going to start addressing it in depth immediately as part of the strategic planning process, where we have an in-depth data retreat, which is really going to set the stage for how we address student performance from a data perspective moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Kim.
Thank you. So a top educational priority for me would be to improve our school climate. Just last month, the school board reaffirmed its 2017 Statement of Conclusion, which embraces diversity and commits the district to provide a safe and equitable learning environment that fosters a mindset of empathy, respect, and belonging for all students and staff. I'd like to learn more about where we are now and what steps the administration is taking to provide that safe and equitable learning environment. This past year, our sixth through eighth grade students were assessed on social and emotional well-being, and they scored in the 70th percentile nationwide for school climate and in the 50th percentile for sense of belonging. To me, these are really alarming numbers. Also, this past fall, a group of eighth graders asked the administration for education on racial and gender slurs and overall inclusion of others. From the perspective of the students, it's clear that we have work to do to make each child feel that they belong so that they can go about their business of learning the same benefits of security that other children enjoy. And the school board has great resources that we can lean on, such as the Anti-Defamation League and our local group Heroes, which focuses on eliminating racism in our schools.
Thank you. Candidate Hart.
Okay. To answer from an academic
To answer from an academic standpoint, I think that we need to look at and focus on growth. I believe in data as well and trends and comparisons. I think it's important for us to define with our community who our competitive set is. I know that we've looked at MAPS scores and said, well, we can't compare ourselves to, you know, national averages. We should set a higher bar. And so what, what is that bar and how do we come to agreement with the community on how those comparisons should be made? MAP just being obviously one measure of successment of success. And then again, as I mentioned, Anna, coming out of COVID, really taking a look at scores and growth and achievement over the past year and a half and where we really need to focus to get the kids to where they should be going forward and to help track and guide their improvement.
Thank you. Candidate Caesar Ready.
Thanks. So I agree with the other candidates and I don't have a whole lot to add. I think that one of the things that that was new to me as a board member was this metric of growth versus achievement in general and and getting that measure of achievement is something that is fairly straightforward, but to measure the change in growth over time is also important because you you have, you know, high achievers that you also want to grow at a, at a quick rate, just like mid-level achievers and and the whole population of students. So that focus has has been important to me and the community. And I think, I think that is for sure my top priority, although I do really like where Bonnie is going with the social emotional aspects and and generally agree with the other comments.
Thank you. Candidate Kim, you'll take this question first, and I think we're going to give it just one minute. So timer 60 seconds for this one. What are your views on standardized testing and how is District 39 doing?
Thanks for the question. I am not yet in a position to assess the merits of MAP testing or IAR testing. I do know that there is a lot of discussion about the usefulness of standardized tests as a way of measuring future success as more colleges now are eliminating the use of standardized tests as entrance exams. But what I can say is that as a school board member, if I had concerns about the effectiveness of our academic programs or the necessity of standardized testing, I would raise that issue with the administration and ask them for to prepare a response. For example, in its last mid-year report on academic progress, the district last week presented data of each grade's achievement and growth in reading and math. It identified a few groups where scores were low and needed improvement. A community member using the same data presented a very different picture. So we have the same data, but interpreted very differently. And as a school board member, I would want an explanation for that and possibly an outside expert to interpret the data to ensure that we understand the results. In fact, I think review of our academic programs and how we measure their success is an important priority for our new strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Hart.
I believe standardized tests are important. They are important as one measure of a student's growth, but we also must consider many other aspects, curriculum-based assessments, classroom performance, feedback from our teachers, all of these need to roll up into determining a student's level of achievement and growth. And, you know, it's, it's the whole picture that really helps us to decide if there's any need for intervention or differentiated instruction that we can then plan for, measure, and report. I also am a believer and supporter of growth through differentiation. I'm happy for the district pleased with the district that I have one child who will be attending summer school, could qualify for summer school this summer. I have another child who has qualified to take testing to get into Nutria math. So we're experiencing both ends of the spectrum here, and I'm just grateful for the resources at at all of those levels.
Thank you. Candidate Caesar Ready.
Yeah, I think yeah, I have mixed feelings about standardized testing. I think so necessary evil. And, you know, I have a few maybe guardrails around where I would put it, which is keep it to a minimum. And, and that's primarily because class time is so precious, right? I don't want to waste class time with excessive testing and also, in my view, and also use the data that you're getting and and use it well. So I think those are, those tend to be my comments around standardized testing and otherwise leave it to the experts.
Thank you. Candidate Schneider Fabebs.
So I just want to say I concur with candidates he's ready. In, you know, these tasks are just one measure of student performance. And the value is it benchmarks us against our peers, both kind of our Nutria feeder schools and our peers around the state. That's a good thing. But we really don't get the results of the state standardized testing in time to inform instruction during the school year. So I really wish we were spending less time doing it.
Thank you. Candidate Hart, you're going to take this question first. And as sometimes happens, candidates will go into an answer that is asked a little bit more specifically later, so they can just elaborate a bit more. So candidate Hart, you have this question first. District 39 has an articulated statement of inclusion. What do you think the board's priorities should be on diversity, equity, and inclusion?
Right. And so I think when I look at District 39's mission, we cannot accomplish this without fully embracing our statement of inclusion. And I know that statement of inclusion was just recently reaffirmed. I believe it was initiated in 2017 and then recently reaffirmed. I think that the statement of inclusion needs to become an organic part of our academic experience, and I believe it needs to start at the K through four level. Creating that compassionate culture that acknowledges and embraces difference is required for students to thrive long-term regardless of where their individual path might take them. I am, as PTA president, currently working with other PTA presidents to define a new diversity, equity, and inclusion position that will sit on the PTA executive board of each elementary school or actually of each school in the district, I should say. And this does give me a greater appreciation of the importance of our leadership on this team, some practical considerations and challenges to implementing it and the need for thoughtful perspectives. Also, the need for what we're teaching, starting to teach kids at kindergarten to go all the way up and be consistent throughout high school. I think I'm running out of time, but I do believe that all board members must consistently demonstrate and seek to foster an authentic environment of diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Thank you. Candidate Caesar Ready.
Yeah, I am. I think that it was important step to to draft and redraft the statement and that I think we all take it to heart, and I think the district has taken it to heart and has done a lot of work around this and will continue to, and I think it's going to this, this issue of diversity, equity, inclusion is, is something that we're going to incorporate into our everyday operating values. So, you know, and as an elected board member, as a, you know, frankly, a trustee of a great institution, I, I think it's incumbent on the board members to model their behavior in accordance with that statement.
Thank you. Candidate Schneider Fabebs.
So I'm really proud of our statement on inclusion. We owe every student a high-quality education. And if they don't feel included and welcoming in our community, that impacts their ability to learn. As candidate Kim mentioned, student surveys show that we have room to improve. And the board and administration has been very intentional about working on this. I fully expect that this will be one of the goals in the strategic plan. And I look to having the community help us determine how to best approach this. I wanted to just list some examples about how we've been working on this. The board has a deep commitment and we folded it into our ongoing practice. We've had a book group and study. We asked the district how they are managing this. This month, we made Juneteenth a district holiday. On the school level, the administration has addressed this in assemblies, the social emotional curriculum. They've had a focus on adults and the culture adults can create. And teachers have a range of tools and continue to get more tools to uplift and celebrate differences. I love that the PTAs have launched diversity and inclusion teams that are parent-led. And I'm really inspired by how our students are stepping up and speaking out. They feel that they are supported enough to actually raise issues and be heard.
Thank you. Candidate Kim.
Thank you. I think I've addressed this topic pretty thoroughly before, but I just wanted to reiterate the fact that in 2017, I fully supported the board amid statement of inclusion. And also, my background is in public interest law and has been about the about ensuring the rights of members of our society who don't have a strong voice, ensuring that the convicted criminal criminal gets a fair trial and ensuring that somebody who is discriminated against by a landlord or employer or even a school based on race, nationality, or another protected class has a voice. Our children also have a voice, as I mentioned earlier, and I think our school board must strive to protect it. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Caesar Ready, you're going to take this question first. Let me give you a few seconds to think about it. It's never good to get the ones where you've got to prioritize. But think about this, what are the top three projects or goals that you will prioritize during your term? What are the top three projects or goals that you will prioritize during your term?
Okay, well, I, I got one. So I'll come up with two more here in a minute. I think that, you know, as a school board member, you, you it is such a high-functioning district that you tend to get very involved and emotionally into what's going on. And, and I, I think that in what I've watched other school board members kind of come off the school board, they spend a lot of time trying to convey what they know to the new members of the board. And they also spend a lot of time recruiting people to be on the board who would contribute. And, and I think that's something that's gonna be my number one priority. As far as other priorities, I think, you know, I, I have been practicing state and local tax for 25 years. And, and I know a little bit about financial statements and government accounting. And I'm going to spend a lot of time trying to simplify. Good, I'm not sure that is achievable. But, but definitely convey as much as I know to, to other members of the board. We do have an excellent financial manager who have a lot of competence. And three, I think there are living in Womack, it's an influential community. I think there are things we can do to help out on the state level as far as issues.
Thank you. Well done. Finishing up, candidate Schneider Fabebs.
Sure. Thank you. Um, so I'm just going to answer what I think the most critical issues are over the next two years because we really need to focus on a post-COVID response. There's just the regular duties of the superintendent, the policies and the finances, which I talked about before. But the other three, we've also talked about before, which is kind of indicative of their importance. The first is the recovery plan that I mentioned. The second is student performance using data and drilling down on how we can improve performance. And the third is that focus on climate and culture. We need to really make sure that we have a welcoming community for everyone.
Thank you. Candidate Kim.
Thank you. So three priorities. I've already talked about the strategic plan that I'm really excited about and working on improving our school culture. And for me, the third priority would be to ensure that District 39 offers our children the benefits of full day kindergarten as soon as it can. So last year, construction at two of our elementary schools enabled kindergarten enrichment to begin, which is a fee-based extension offered on top of our half-day program. And at its last school board meeting, the school board approved construction for additional classrooms at Mackenzie and Ramona so that kindergarten enrichment can be offered at all four of our elementary schools, which I think is really great news. And I commend the board for that. The end goal in building the classrooms and the key program is to one day move to full day kindergarten, which to me is really important because we're the only district in the Nutria township not to offer full day kindergarten, which puts our students at a disadvantage and also for parents who stayed home for their children's earlier years to be able to go back to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Hart.
Okay, when I think about the top three priorities, I think my number one priority as a candidate that is running for the first time is to listen and learn from our community. I have, you know, volunteered from for numerous for numerous positions throughout Womack in our schools. And so I think I have learned a lot there. I have appreciated learning a lot as I am running for this position and talking to others, be it, you know, friends, neighbors, candidates running for other positions, other elected positions in Womack. And I hope to focus on that and continue to learn. I have only scratched the process at this, at this point. And my second priority would be the strategic plan is I see that to be a roadmap that clearly defines where our district as a whole wants to go over the next three to five years. And as I mentioned, I think it is incredibly important to get as many stakeholders involved in the process as we can. And third, which will also probably be part of the strategic plan is COVID recovery. We've talked about that, but any academic or social emotional challenges that our students are facing specific to COVID is a top priority for me as well.
Thank you. We're going to move to the closing statements now. Everyone has 60 seconds for this. We're going to just go backwards, backwards according to my list. So candidate Caesar Ready, you'll go first, then Hart, Kim, et cetera.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters again for this forum. It's been excellent. And then the other candidates for participating as well. From my perspective, the current board works well and and that continuity is important to its continuing success. If I am reelected, I would make a significant contribution to that continuity. Aside from contributing to the continuity of leadership, I bring a significant background in financial issues and tax issues facing the district. And I also work well with others. I appreciate your time and attention and ask you for your vote. I'm in the first position on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Hart.
Sure. Okay. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for organizing today's forum, and thank you to my fellow candidates for the discussion. And lastly, thank you to our community members who took time out of your Saturday morning to listen. I think it's great to see the interest from our community, and I believe that the more interest, the stronger we are overall. When I thought about my closing statement for today, I asked myself, what am I looking for in a candidate? And the first thing that came to mind was trust. And I realized, wow, this, this is a really big deal. And I want to tell you, you can trust that I am running to give all students the best possible academic experience and foundation for future success regardless of their destination. You can trust me to be fiscally responsible steward of our community and resources. And you can trust I will listen to you. I will learn and thoughtfully serve. I humbly ask you to vote for Ann Hart, number five on the ballot. John is first. I am last. Thank you for your consideration, and I hope you can get out and enjoy this beautiful day.
Thank you. Candidate Kim.
Thank you to the League for hosting us this morning. And thank you voters for taking the time to learn about us and for caring about the state of our schools. I'm running to help our schools provide the best educational opportunities for all of our children so that they have the tools to thrive and be whoever they want to be. I'm excited to work with the administration, board, and community and to see where we can take our schools as we fulfill our district's mission to teach our children to become creative thinkers, collaborators, and socially responsible, compassionate, and productive citizens of a global society. Please vote for me, Bonnie Kim, ballot position number three. Please vote for me, Bonnie Kim, ballot position number three.
Thank you. Candidate Schneider Fabebs.
Thank you. I wanted to thank you all again for coming, for listening and asking questions. Thanks to the League for putting this together. It's no small feat. I would be honored to serve again with all the candidates presenting today. I appreciated everyone's perspectives. When you listened to me today, I hope you take away several things. I will provide consistency on the board, along with Candidates Caesar Ready. I've served on the board for four years, two years as president. I'm committed to Willmet. I have more than a decade of service to the community, and I'm balanced. I look to understand all points of view and to data to help make decisions. I have the skills, commitment, and vision for what it takes to be an effective board member these next four years. For these reasons, I ask for your vote. Please vote for me, Lisa Schneider Fabebs, second on the ballot on April 6th, if not before. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. As usual, when I look at things that happen in Willmet, such well-prepared candidates that you have. So even those of you who are on mute right now, if you want to unmute yourselves, we're going to do proxy applause for our candidates for this wonderful forum because it's the only applause they're gonna get. You at home, feel free to join in, even if we can't hear you. Here we go.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will reconvene